I'd like to call to order the March 31st, 2020, meeting of the Hingham Board of Selectmen to order. It's 7:00. Thank you for joining us via conference call. I will announce that the meeting is being held remotely by telephone as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all telephone communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham and are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to move first to the approval of the minutes of March 24th. I think some of my colleagues had edits. Heidi, thank you for taking care of those. Any further discussion with respect to the minutes of March 24, 2019? I mean, 2020? That's actually one edit.
This is Joe Fisher. I've reviewed the minutes and I would move for approval of the minutes dated March 24, 2020.
This is Mary Power. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? By roll call, vote. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes of March 24, 2020, as presented, say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson? Aye. Okay. Next, we will move to the COVID-19 update and I'll turn to the Town Administrator Tom Mayo for that.
Thank you very much, Karen. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, this is Tom Mayo, Town Administrator. I'll just read a rather lengthy, actually, update so we can keep people as apprised as possible. So, regarding an extension through May 4th. Last week, the Governor Baker issued an emergency order extending the closure of all public and private schools and all non-emergency childcare programs in Massachusetts until May 4th of 2020 in an effort to prevent the further spread of COVID-19. As you know, the town suspended all nonessential municipal services and shifted staff to remote work to the extent possible on March 13th. We are now planning to operate in this state until at least May 4th, in line with Governor Baker's most recent decision. Michelle will provide an update on the town services shortly, as soon as I'm done with this. Regarding specifically on COVID-19 response, all of our actions and decisions are guided, as they always are, by the need to keep our citizens and our employees safe and healthy. The town's COVID-19 response is being led by our emergency management team, which meets seven days a week via video conference. We are in the process of implementing a more robust incident command system that will pull staff in from all other departments to augment our local COVID-19 response. Our Health Department team has been on the forefront of this pandemic and standing up the ICS structure, the Incident Command System structure, will greatly support and enhance their efforts. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health has several resources available. The state has promoted a number of new resources to help connect residents with healthcare resources if they display COVID-19 symptoms. These include the Bowie Online Tool, which helps Massachusetts residents get advice from an online health assistant safely at home for free. The new messaging tool called Alerts MA, which allows residents to subscribe to real-time text notifications about coronavirus by texting the keyword COVIDMA to 888-777. And the 211 Information and Referral Hotline, where residents can make free and confidential calls to COVID-19 questions by dialing 211. We've posted a message to the town website yesterday with links to more information about each of these resources. Regarding data, according to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, as of today, there were 6,620 laboratory confirmed cases of COVID-19 across Massachusetts, including 459 in Plymouth County. DPH has recommended that local health departments report positive case numbers by county. The numbers reported by the state only include laboratory confirmed cases. They do not include clinical diagnoses of COVID-19 by medical professionals or people who self-diagnose and stay at home. Thus, the number of actual cases may be higher than what is reported through the state system. We have included a link to the DPH current case count on the town website and will continue to use these figures. It is important to remember that viruses do not respect town boundaries. In today's hyper-connected world, social distancing is absolutely essential. Every choice you make could save a life or put one at risk. It is crucial that we all stay at home as much as possible and practice social distancing to prevent further spread of COVID-19 in our communities. Preventative actions. And you've heard some of this before, but I think it bears repeating. Everyone should continue to take everyday preventative actions and precautions. Maintain social distancing. Stay six feet away from other people. No gatherings of over 10 people. Grocery stores, food pantries, banks and pharmacies may have over 10 people, but you also may be maintaining social distancing. Clean your hands often by using soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If soap and water are not available, use a hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. To the extent possible, avoid touching high-touch surfaces in public places, elevator buttons, door handles, handrails, handshaking with people, et cetera. Avoid touching your face, nose, eyes, et cetera. Practice routine cleaning of frequently touched surfaces, for example, tables, doorknobs, light switches, handles, desks, toilets, faucets, sinks and cellphones. As always, call your primary care provider directly if you are experiencing symptoms such as a fever, cough and shortness of breath. So, at this point, I think, Emma Johnson, I think it's appropriate to ask, as part of the COVID-19 update, Michelle, to provide us with an update of the town services and what we're providing on a daily basis.
Thanks. I recognize Michelle Montzegier.
Thanks, Karen. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. So, as we stated last week, we're doing our best to keep municipal services running while protecting employees and residents. As Tom mentioned, our Health Department is working around the clock to monitor potential and confirm COVID-19 cases, communicate with DPH and the CDC, answer questions from our residents, reach out to businesses and food establishments, and advise municipal and school officials. Our school nurses have been supporting the Health Department team in responding to the crisis, which is great. And in addition, school food services staff have partnered with our Veteran Services Department to make sure that meals are still reaching disabled veterans and other vulnerable people in our community. Our police, fire, Public Works teams and our 911 dispatchers continue to provide the vital services to our community that they always do. The transfer station remains open and Public Works crews are still working to maintain our public infrastructure around town. Although the Senior Center is closed right now, Senior Center staff are still coordinating meals on wheels, as we mentioned last week, facilitating needed rides for dialysis appointments and reaching out to seniors around town to make sure that they have everything they need. One example of that is our Director of Elder Services is initiating a series of phone call messages to seniors in town to make them aware of different resources during this time. Senior Center and Recreation Department staff are working on ways to implement remote and online classes for some of their more popular programs. And our Building Department is processing permits online and conducting inspections of unoccupied buildings. Similarly, assessing staff or conducting drive-by inspection of properties. We're trying to keep things going the best we can. The Hingham Public School Department is rolling out a remote learning plan within the next few days that will take effect on April 4th and will run through the extent of closures. Public meetings like this one right now are taking place via conference call to keep town business moving forward. We've also created a community notices page on our website. I think we mentioned this last week, but it's worth mentioning again, where local businesses can advertise the services and resources they have available for the public at this time. As always, contact information for all of our departments is on the town's COVID-19 webpage. We're all here working behind the scenes and we're available by phone and email if anyone needs assistance.
Great. Thank you, Michelle.
Can I just add one other line?
Sure.
Wanted to make sure that people know, I spoke with the superintendent today, who wanted me to announce publicly that Hingham Public Schools will be rolling out a remote learning plan within the next couple of days that will take effect on Monday, April 4th, and will run through the extent of any closures.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it seems appropriate, I did this the last time, kind of at the beginning of the meeting, I'll do it here now, just to take the folks that are on the phone through what the process will be, you know, for participation and for our discussion this evening. You know, it's a little, obviously, more difficult to see you and when you want to participate, but nonetheless, we want that to happen if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment. So, as you may know, if you've attended or watched our meetings in the past, what we typically do is have a presentation like we just had of an issue or a topic. The members of the Board of Selectmen will discuss that topic and then I will open it up to questions or comments from the public. What I had asked and had posted on the agenda was that if people knew in advance that they wanted to make a comment, it would be helpful to let our office know so that we can refer to that comment list, just to keep things, I think, organized in the context of a conference call. If you'd like to be recognized, though, when I ask for public comment, you know, please do state your name and if there are multiple people, you know, kind of chiming in at once, I'll take your names down and we'll work through that list. And that will occur during each section of the agenda. So, we have the COVID-19 update. We'll be talking about annual town meeting, the town election and signing of the town warrants, which are the bills and payroll system for the town. And then there'll be a general public comment section, so that'll kind of take us through the agenda for the evening. So, at this juncture, we're still at the COVID-19 update and I'd like to turn to my colleagues for any questions or comments, beginning with Joe Fisher.
Aye. So, thank you, Tom and Michelle, and thanks to everyone else who is providing support and incredible services to the residents of Hingham. When we go through certain things, there's shorthand that we all assume everyone knows. I just want to make explicit a couple of things. We keep saying, "Things are available on the town website." I assume most people know, but there are some who don't know what the town website is, which is hingham-ma.gov. So, that's where you should go. It's hingham-ma.gov. I have a question for either Michelle or Tom. If people, if residents want to call into a department, whether it's Public Works or whatever department is, are they keeping regular hours? How is the phone being handled right now?
Yeah, so people can call. There's a, on the COVID-19 section of the town's website, thank you for giving that URL out, there is a button on the left side that allows people to get town information and departmental information. And in there, each department has a phone number listed. They can call that phone number. Most likely, they will get a recording. Please leave a message and they will be, the call will be returned.
Michelle, you mentioned, I think it was Michelle, mentioned that the transfer station remains open. Are the hours the same? Have they changed, been abbreviated? If you could just comment on that.
Yes, I believe the transfer station is open, the regular hours, Thursday through Sunday at this time.
Yes, that's right.
So, I know there are other items on the agenda that we're going to cover some specifics, so that's all I have right now. Thank you again.
Great.
Mary Power.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Michelle. Just a follow-up to Joe's question. Am I correct that the swap shop continues to be closed until further notice?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. And Tom, the statement that you read, will that be put on the website tomorrow?
It will now.
I think that will be very helpful. It was, there was a lot of great information there and I think it'll be a helpful reference for people both on this call as well as others. I just want to reiterate, I am so grateful for all of the support of our dedicated employees who, you know, many people are being asked to do things that they don't normally do as part of their job. I'm very appreciative of the degree of cooperation between the town and the School Department relative to resources, the nurses in particular, and the food service. I hope the residents of the community understand that we are all working together very hard to both ensure continuity of operations, but also to help take care of our citizens during this very difficult time. That's all I have on this topic.
Thanks, Mary. You know, picking up on where Mary left off, I just, well, I guess two things. I am just amazed and heartened by the amount of teamwork on the town and school side. You know, I think we talked about it last week when presented with the challenge. I think this town rises to nothing. And I just am every day amazed at the extent to which people will go to help each other out, to reach out and to proactively, I think, try to help each other in the challenges that we all face. And I think that extends to the citizens of this community. I just have been, again, so gratified with how folks are responding and reaching out and caring for each other in this community. And it's everything from, you know, joining Hingham Link that Mary talked about last night, to, you know, there have been these beautiful painted rocks along Main Street, you know, trying to brighten people's day. I just, I really get the sense that we are in it together. It's not an easy time for us, but to have a community like this band together to get us all through it, I think we're lucky and I, for one, am very grateful for that. So, questions from the public with respect to the COVID-19 update? Is there anyone out there that would like to be recognized on this topic? Okay, I'm not, I'm not hearing anything, so I'm going to move, at this point, to the discussion and vote to postpone Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 9, and all the other applicable laws. So, you know, we're in a situation where, given the governor's orders, we can't gather for town meeting this year on the date that was specified for town meeting, which was April 27th. And so, the question is, you know, what do we do in terms of planning to create at least some, you know, some certainty moving forward? And in the discussions that we had with the moderator and town council, Massachusetts General Law currently allows the Board of Selectmen to consider an alternate date, so long as that alternate date is prior to the end of the fiscal year. So, our fiscal year ends on June 30th, so we could pick a date, any date before June 30th, to conduct the business of town meeting and to commence the business of town meeting. And so, in discussions, again, with the moderator and town council, the town clerk, Tom and Michelle, we thought we would consider a date as far out in June as we could go, again, without interfering with the end of the fiscal year. And then, you know, not to jump to the next topic, but the way our bylaws are structured, typically, we hold town meeting on a Monday and we have our town election the following Saturday. And so, in order to kind of follow that same rhythm, we were going to propose, or I was going to propose, a June 22nd, a Monday, June 22nd, town meeting with a June 27th election date, which would be the following Saturday. Now, you know, do I know for certain that we will be able to hold town meeting on that date? I don't. But I think, in terms of our planning and our expectations, you know, I'd like to, I think we'd like to, or I'd like to at least move forward, hoping that we can get to that date. We would continue to monitor the situation, obviously, but I think it's clear that we can't hold town meeting when we had hoped to hold town meeting, pardon me. And I guess my view is, if we can pick a date far enough out, you know, we have some hope that potentially we could gather on that date. And we have the ability to do that under current Massachusetts General Law, pardon me. So, having said that, Joe, do you have any comments or questions with respect to this topic?
Well, I think it's a good idea that we move town meeting. We, I think we spoke about it at our last meeting. It clearly needs to happen. I note that other towns, surrounding towns, have picked dates early in May or even later in May. Ours is later than what I think most towns that have announced are doing, but I think we're going the prudent way because the date keeps getting pushed back as to when assembly will be allowed. And I think picking a date as far out as we did maximizes the chance that we will not need to reconsider the date. So, I am in favor of the June 22nd date for town meeting.
Thanks, Joe. Mary, any comments?
Yeah, I agree for the reasons that Joe mentioned. Karen, I appreciate you, Tom, Town Clerk Eileen McCracken, Town Moderator Michael Puzo and Council John Coughlin, working through a schedule that is helpful. I also recognize that for our fellow citizens who have stepped forward and volunteered to run for office, as we all know, that's a really daunting thing to do. And I think under these circumstances, it's a little bit unusual. My hope is that this date will also give all of these fine candidates the visibility that their candidacy deserves and that it also maximizes participation in both our town meeting and the town election.
Great. Thank you. So, at this point, Tom and Michelle, do you have anything further to add? Otherwise, I'll open a public comment.
Good. Thank you. I would note that Attorney Coughlin is on the line if you have questions.
Okay. And John, anything we missed in that discussion?
Nope. You got it.
That's because you told it to us.
I did, this is Joe. I just wanted to ask a question to make sure that holding town meeting on this date is appropriate in terms of our fiscal responsibilities for budgets.
I don't.
That's a question, I mean, am I correct that?
Yes.
It's consistent with our fiscal obligations?
Yes. It's before the end of the fiscal year. We would start the new fiscal year with the new authorizations from town meeting on June 22nd, if we have a meeting on the 22nd.
Great. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Any members of the public who would like to be heard on the proposal to postpone town meeting until June 22nd?
This is Dot Gallo.
Dot, I recognize Dot Gallo.
You did. I just have a question, assuming that the date is voted as 22nd, would there be the typical moderator's meeting during the prior weekend and would that be conducted in some way that people could at least? Well, I guess we would assume that by June 22nd, we could have public assembly, such as that meeting, where people could in person hear about the proposed warrant items and the comments and questions that might be needed.
I think you're spot on, Dot, and that, you know, so, you know, one question is, will the rules of assembly be lifted such that we can gather in a group, you know, in our case, of at least 300, right? Because that's our quorum requirement at this point. And I'm just, I'm talking at this point also about current law. There are proposals to allow Boards of Selectmen to further extend past the end of the fiscal year. There are budget provisions that would allow us to spend into next year based on our prior year's allocations. But let's assume for a minute that, you know, we are able to gather. I think part of the, you know, part of the decision-making and organization around it would be, in what way can we gather? How safely can we gather? What changes or alterations might we need to make to the setup of town meeting? So, as a, for instance, let's assume we can gather, but we still want to be able to social distance. So, we might want to change check-in procedures, for instance. We might want to make all three rooms available and limit the number of folks that can sit in any one venue. And to your point, Dot, if the moderator is going to hold, and the moderator would hold his meeting, he may need to hold it in a bigger venue than he's typically, you know, planning for. So, it might be, right, it might be if you have a gathering of 30 people, you're actually putting it in a room that would hold 50 people or something along those lines. So, I think we're, I think, in some ways, we're trying to buy ourselves some time and buy ourselves some information, because I think, as we've all learned, I think, week to week, this situation has evolved, you know, and unfortunately, at this point, not in a good direction. But to Joe's earlier point, I think pushing it out as far as fiscally possible and as legally possible under current law, you know, I think it allows us to inform the entire town meeting process, which, to Dot's point, would include the moderator's meeting.
Can I assume, as a follow-up, that if the meeting were to be on Monday, the 22nd, a second day of a meeting, if needed, would then be on the 23rd?
Yes.
Because that probably should be announced at the same time.
I guess the way. Yeah, I guess the way the moderator has phrased this is the commencement of town meeting. So, the town meeting commences on the 22nd and it doesn't adjourn until the business has been concluded.
Right.
But you're right.
Thank you.
Typically, we would move to the second night, which would be that Tuesday. Further comments from the public with respect to the proposal to postpone town meeting?
Karen?
Yes.
It's Lucy Handpock.
Hi, Lucy. How are you?
I'm fine. I'm wondering, will the warrant be mailed as usual or will you hold it back until June and it is fixed as it currently is set, right? There's no change to the warrant?
At this juncture, there's no change to the warrant. I think that we will, we will likely hold it and, again, watch as the situation evolves. But the warrant is set at the moment. I think we will, we will try to inform ourselves as to whether there should be any changes in the short term and then mail accordingly, given the date of town meeting.
And you could have an addendum if you needed to, if something needed to change?
That's exactly right. But you know how it is, right? Like, we really try to print a warrant that when we put it in people's hands, that's the business of the town that we're taking up. But, again, you know, this is new territory, so that if things were to change rapidly, we certainly could have an addendum that would be available the evening of town meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen? This is Mary. I just wanted to follow up on the comment. The cover of the warrant typically has the date and the time of the meeting. And I think that we would want to take that into consideration when determining when to mail the warrant, because that's the official kind of notice of the meeting. And we would hate to have any confusion should a date need to change.
I agree with that. Right. And so, you know, again, we're waiting on pending legislation that would empower the Board of Selectmen to push the meeting out further.
Sure.
But to your earlier point, Mary, I think we wanted to try to create some certainty with the facts as we understood them today. And the fact, as we understand them today, and more particularly for the next article, which is the town election, you know, some certainty around when we think we can conduct our town meeting, but even more so, when we will have the town election. And so, you know, not to jump too far ahead, but if we are to approve the postponement of the election, the election will take place whether or not town meeting takes place on January, on June 22nd.
Yep.
So, maybe we can take that up next. But it was important, in all our discussions, it was important to create some certainty for the town and for the candidates as to when the election would take place.
Karen, this is Joe. Am I correct that the warrant is also going to be published online at the town website?
Yes.
Great.
Further comments with respect to the postponed, proposed postponement of town Thank you. Thank you for the folks who spoke up. Thanks for being so respectful. Any further questions or comments from my colleagues with respect to the postponement of town meeting?
No.
If not, I would accept a motion.
I move to delay the Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting from Monday, April 27, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., until Monday, June 22, 2020, at 7:00 p.m., pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 39, Section 9.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, by roll call, vote. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson? Aye. Okay. So, then, the next item on the agenda is the So then, the next item on the agenda is the postponement of our town election under Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020. And maybe John Coughlin can help us out a little bit here. We did have to wait, you know, part of the timing of our discussion tonight was, we needed to wait until the legislature had acted to give us the authority to actually move the election. Under current law, we had the ability to move or postpone town meeting, but we didn't have any ability to change the date of the election, which is also specified in our bylaws. This legislative relief, again, is pursuant to the Governor's Declaration of a State of Emergency here in the Commonwealth, and would allow us to, to move the date of the election. You know, the, the date of the election, as I indicated earlier, as specified in our bylaw, is, is the Saturday following town meeting. So we decided, as a proposal to you all, that, that we would pick that Saturday following the date that we've now selected for town meeting, which is June 22nd. So it would mean the election would take place on June 27, 2020. And I don't see Eileen on the call list here, but one of the concerns withholding the election on May 2nd, because that was discussed, was the ability to get ballots printed and mailed out to folks, because we can't have in-person voting at this, at this juncture. And that was not going to be possible. So since we had to move the election anyway, we decided to append it to town meeting in the rather regular rhythm. But, as you saw probably in the notice that was circulated, voting will take place by early mail voting or absentee ballots, so the entire election can take place by mail. So once we fix this particular date, this will be the date that the town votes for the candidates who are running for office. And to Mary's earlier point, it's got to be just a really stressful time. You know, it's hard enough to run for election, and then to have this sort of environment where it's difficult to get your message out, it's difficult to talk with people, and then to not even know when folks are going to be casting their ballots. It was, I think, important to all of us to provide some certainty around at least that latter concern. So, so that's the proposal, and, pardon me, our ability to undertake it is because of the legislative relief provided, you know, for, for other municipalities, us and other municipalities, to be able to conduct their business, given this strange circumstance. Questions from my colleagues. Joe?
Yes. So again, I think pushing out the election makes sense in this environment. Hopefully, it will give the candidates an opportunity to be out there. How, do we know how soon, once we pick the date, when would absentee ballots and early voting commence, given a proposed June 27th date for the actual election?
John, do you know that? Is it two weeks before?
Yeah, so there's, you can do it, you can do it earlier. Under the statute, the election has to be held between, anytime between now and June 30th. So we're picking June 27th. But I, Eileen can begin to print the ballots at any time that she wants, and I think she's already started that process.
Yeah.
Karen, I, I am here, and, hi, I'm sorry. And I, I have waited for the meeting to ask to have the ballots printed. I will be calling tomorrow to have them printed. And we should, usually, there's a two-week window, and as soon as we get them, I will be, they will be available. And you did mention that it would be totally a by-mail election, and it cannot be. We still have to have the upholding place available on Election Day.
Okay. Okay.
I took that comment to mean that early voting would be by mail, not going in. And as well, absentee ballots would be by mail, but there would still be in-person voting available on the new date of June 27th. Am I correct on that?
You are correct, Joe.
Okay. And that the early voting would, does the Board of Selectmen need to establish by our vote a date for when early, early voting would commence? Or is that just a normal process?
According to the Secretary of State's office, it can start at any time.
Okay. Joe, the statute just requires the Board of Selectmen to pick the election date, but everything else, there's no further vote required on any of the other timelines.
Well, I mean, maybe, maybe one of the, maybe one of the follow-ups would be, once you have the ballots prepared, you know, we, we talk about it again, and establish the date that you want to establish to open up the voting.
Right.
Right.
Because I'm thinking of there are organizations like the League of Women Voters that, you know, establish a forum for people to meet the candidates, ask questions, and I want to make sure that they've got appropriate time to, to do that.
Right.
That's fine. I can let you know when, when I do have ballots. And I know that a couple of the groups that usually would have some kind of a forum are not having them, but I would imagine that maybe the League of Women Voters would.
Well, and maybe, you know, maybe, maybe the league can work on a, a virtual forum, at the very least.
And they'll serve some virtual hors d'oeuvres.
But I, I think it's a good, I think you're right, Joe. I think once we know the date that the ballots are available, you know, we should publicize that broadly.
Assuming that we do vote to extend the election date, John, would you be able to comment on what this does to the terms of current members who were up for election or might be going off of their board? I'm assuming that they would remain in office until this election happens and their successors are voted. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So that current members who might think they're getting off at the usual time are going to be pressed into extended service until the vote actually happens.
That's correct.
Present company included, Karen.
Did you hear that, Karen? That was my next. We're not, we're not letting you off. Okay. So that, that's all I have for, on this topic. Thank you.
Thanks. Mary?
I don't have any comment. This all makes sense.
Okay. Questions from the public with respect to the postponement or proposed postponement of the town election? Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to postpone and reschedule the Town of Hingham Annual Election from Saturday, May 2, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., to Saturday, June 27, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., pursuant to Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the signing of the warrants under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56. So the warrants, it was, when I, every time I see that word, all I think about is the town warrant, and not the warrants that we sign. So Joe and Mary and I, members of the Board of Selectmen, sign payroll accountings, as well as other bill payments that are made through the town accountant's office. The three of us have talked extensively with Sue Nickerson over the last several years to understand the processes by which those warrants are generated, so that we understand the legitimacy of the charges on the, on the warrants. And, and they're left for our signature, our review and our signature. And we do that as a matter of course, you know, when we're in and out of town hall. The warrants cannot be processed unless at least one of us signs off, I guess, I'm sorry, at least two of us sign off on those warrants. Massachusetts law allows the Board to designate one individual to be the signatory of the warrant. And I think part of the, part of the reason for considering that delegation tonight is just to simplify the administrative processes around, you know, making sure that town business, town bills get paid, payroll gets paid, without kind of missing a step. So that's the, the next item on the agenda. Joe, do you have any questions on that?
Are you volunteering?
Yeah, so I guess that, that was one question I had, was, you know, maybe it makes sense for me to do it. But then, after the town election, I think the, you know, the new board then would, would need to designate whoever the, I would assume whoever the new chair is to, to sign the warrant, to sign the warrants. So I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it, you know, through, through the end of my term, if that makes sense to, to you all.
I, I think that makes sense to me, Mary. I don't mean to speak for you.
Makes, it makes sense to me. There are so many times that the chair is authorized to do things on behalf of the Board. I see this as no different.
And, you know, I think the three of us have kind of fallen into our routine of review, so, you know, that, that doesn't stop here, just because it's, it's one of us. You know, I think the verification that the warrants have been prepared, and that the charges are all appropriate, will continue to take place.
I have nothing further.
Okay. Mary, anything further?
Nothing further.
Would anybody from the public like to be heard with respect to the delegation of authority by the Board of Selectmen for the signing of the payroll and expense warrants under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 56? Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
I move to authorize Karen Johnson to approve all bills, drafts, orders, and payrolls on behalf of the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section, Section 56, for so long as she is a selectman.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, by roll call vote. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes the bulk of the business. So, you know, last week was kind of our trial run on this. I thought we did pretty well overall. So this week, we, we did want to add back the public comment section of the meeting. I think, again, just because of the rhythm of all this, it probably helps us to kind of get into our business right away, and then save the public comment for the end of the meeting, which is the way we've put the agenda together this evening. So if there's anybody out there that would like to make a comment on items that were not on the agenda this evening, if you could ask to be recognized, and again, if there are multiple people, I'll make a little list, and we'll work through anybody who would like to be heard this evening. Hearing none, I will move to town administrator reports. Michelle?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to, just quickly, let everyone know that, you know, I mentioned in my update earlier that the, the incident, excuse me, the emergency management team has been meeting on a daily basis. That's been under, that's been happening for a couple of weeks now. And I'll report out, we mentioned earlier today, too, that we were going to be standing up an incident management team in an incident command system, a formal incident command system, that'll be taking place in the coming days. And I just want everyone to know, in town and on this, online here, that you're all in really good hands with your chiefs and their staff. I work daily, multiple times a day, with both chiefs, Murphy and Olson. They are extremely qualified and, and comfortable in their leadership roles. They are represented and well, when needed, by their, by their deputies, Deputy Lou Lechance, Deputies Bill Powers, and Deputy Dave Jones of the Police Department. So I just want to underscore, everyone should feel very comfortable with your emergency management team. They're highly qualified and excellent at their jobs.
Well said, Tom. Very well said. Joe?
Yes. So when Michelle said, "Nothing to report," she's, she gave a lengthy report earlier, and both she and Tom really are doing incredible work. So, again, thank you for, for supporting the town, for supporting the Board of Selectmen, and really for supporting the residents. It's, it's much appreciated. Going forward, I am looking to the Board of Selectmen at, at our meetings to make clear that we are doing what we can to assist our residents, to assist the local businesses to get through this process. We will be ever vigilant, and there will be things coming up on the website, and we will do what we can to make everyone's burden just a little bit, a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mary?
Just to pick up on Joe's comments, I would just mention two things to people. The first one is, for those who are interested in supporting our downtown merchants, you can go to discoverhingham.com, and there are opportunities there to make donations to the downtown merchants and to purchase gift cards for selected merchants. We talked a little bit about that last week, and the importance of that. I would also just extend our appreciation, as well as to encourage residents, that there are many Hingham restaurants who are providing carryout business. Some are doing it family-style, some are doing it with a limited menu. But for many of these restaurants, this is their way to try to both support the community and also to maintain employment for many people who are part of ours and neighboring communities. And I would encourage us all to take advantage of, of that as well. That's it for me.
Great.
Absolutely. Great.
And then, you know, sort of one last layer of this, you know, both for businesses and our citizens, is the work of our state delegation, Joe Moschino, Pat O'Connor, Jamie Murphy, and Representative Lynch's office. We are maintaining communication, both at the state and federal level, because, as you know, there, there's, you know, there's federal stimulus money, there's state legislative relief. We are trying to stay on top of all of those avenues to support both the businesses and residents of Hingham. And we will, you know, we will continue to do that. So, you know, I just echo the comments we made at the beginning. You know, I have long felt fortunate to live and volunteer in this community, and, and this, this situation that is stressful and uncertain, you know, could, could be, it could be really difficult, I think, to manage local government. And the leadership, as Tom indicated, that we have in place, both in Tom and Michelle, and all of the department heads, and the leadership in place at the schools, the level of cooperation, and kind of focus on the tasks at hand, has really just been incredible to see. So, again, I appreciate all the efforts of, of the folks who, who live and work in this community, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. So on that note, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Oops. Second?
All those in favor, by roll call vote. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Hey, thanks for being on the line. We appreciate the support. Take good care.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Night, everybody.